This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Naperville City Council Regular Meeting. It is Monday, December 19th, 2022. The City Council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format. The public may view the meeting virtually using the GoToMeeting information, which is on the city website. Public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote-meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public comment via the remote-meeting access. Can we have a roll call, please? Clerk.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
I move to appoint Alderman Berry as the temporary chairman for tonight's meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, could you please do the roll?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you. If you would please stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Okay, I would now need a, we'd like, need to go into, we need to go over the public hearing for the Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation. I need a motion to go into, for public. What am I doing? The public hearing, public hearing. Okay, somebody, Alderman Goodman?
I move to go into public hearing for the purposes of the 2022 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation Hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Okay, for this information, we're going to go to the Finance Director, Kevin Delschrend.
Thank you very much, and good evening. When we first discussed the 2022 Property Tax Levy at the November Public Safety and Finance Committee Meeting, we did not have information yet at that point from Naperville Township. And I'm gonna go back over a little bit, the information we received, both from Winfield and then from Naperville Township. EAVs in Naperville, I'm sorry, in Winfield Township are projected increased by an average of 4.3%. And there was 18.2 million in new construction within the Winfield Township part of Warrenville. And Naperville Township EAVs are gonna increase by an average of 3.7%. And there was new construction within the Naperville Township part of Warrenville of a little over $11.4 million. The levy does not seek a rate increase of any kind. And there's only about $5,000 in additional levy that's required for the police pension fund, which is a very small increase from the prior year. We, the cap for the year is 5.5%. We have opted not to go all the way to that 5.5%. And while we are not required to have a hearing transparency in our experience in the past as we hold this hearing anyway, so that we are transparent about what we're doing.
Thank you. Alderman, do you have any comments or questions? Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks to the new Naperville assessors for actually providing us with information. That's a very nice change from past practice, and I hope will indicate continuing transparency going forward. The significant increases to the EAV in both parts of town, combined with our very small 1.8% increase in the levy, means that we're projecting overall, it would, it's hard to know without the exact numbers, but it'll probably actually be a decrease in the rate for most people in Warrenville. And that'll depend on what other overlapping taxing districts they're in, what it would decrease by. It's not a simple mathematical answer that can be the same for everybody, but it's nice to hold our property taxes lower when we can, which we do here in Warrenville.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Alderman?
Madam Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
I'd like to remind everyone that in keeping with longstanding City Council policy, we will be self-capping our levy as well, even though we're not required to. Since 2004, we've capped our levy every year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any comments from the public? You can please go to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. First question is, are there any recapture funds in the $3,758,000 levy?
If you're referring to the amount that they started doing within this last year, where they recoup money from the changes, that amount is not determined yet. I can't tell you that for 2021, that was a little over $7,500.
And that, and that is in the levy?
Correct.
Okay. The second question, on the two new construction, the 18 million and the 11 million, what portion of these were in TIF III, TIF IV, and the non-TIF areas?
Mr. Delschrend, do you have any idea?
I do not have that answer with me this evening. I don't have the breakdown of the two pieces.
Okay.
Okay.
We can certainly provide that, though.
Okay, the reason is the fact that the new construction is handled differently in the TIF districts than it is in the non-TIF district. Also, what occurs is the fact that none of this $29 million were lower anyone's income tax, I'm sorry, property tax. Because with the non-TIF areas, this is not only stated as additional revenue to the city, it does not add to the EAV to reduce the tax rates. So there's no decrease in your taxes from this. In the TIF district, as you know, the money all goes to the city, so there's no restriction there. So we can look at this as a benefit to the city, but not a benefit to the taxpayers as far as their property taxes being paid. Now, on the 1.84%, you're stating is the increase in the amount that would be paid per average. If we go down to our Ray Street, we can see a difference depending upon if you're on the west side of the street or the east side of the street. On the west side of the street, there will be a 1.84% increase. On the east side, with the 70- and 90-year-old houses, there will be a 4.32% increase in property taxes. That was basically over 100% of the average. So I think to be transparent, it's important to identify and have the impact of the new construction on the taxpayers, and also see what is occurring in these areas, the impact on the taxpayers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment regarding the property tax levy? Okay, thank you. We would need a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Alderman Goodman?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Clerk, could you please read the roll call?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now on to citizens' comments. We have several people that have signed up. Mr. Seibert, are you, okay, you've made your comment already, thank you. Mitch Adamas. And we also have Pam Spivak and Patty Village. If you'd please come up. Don't forget to state your name and address, please. Are we all speaking together? No, I don't think so. I don't know who's speaking.
Good evening again. Well, thank you for your time.
You will definitely have to go to the microphone, so people can see you. And try not to put that too far in front of your face, you know. Okay, that's good, that should. If you have anything to hand out, you must hand it out, Ms. Ms., you can't hand that out. You need to hand it to the clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. You've probably heard this story before.
Oh, sir, if you could give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mitch Adamas, 29W606 Mack Road. Okay. We've visited this issue a couple of times before. And I would just like to elaborate and make things a little more clear on our concerns with the bike path. All of the arguments, safety is the primary argument here, looking out for the citizens of Warrenville. With the south-side alignment, you only have, safety is the obvious issue. You want to build the path on our north side.
You know what, sir, you're gonna have to keep your voice right to the microphone, or people will not be able to hear you. But you can actually pick it up and hold it in your hand, if you like.
Oh, I didn't know it was not attached.
That's good. This way, everyone will be able to hear what you're saying.
Okay. The current intention is to build a path on the north side. It is much more dangerous because of that. Then not only do you have to cross Route 59, you also have to cross Mack Road. And in doing so, when you have a family crossing Mack Road, if people want to turn westbound onto Mack Road, I mean, onto, off of 59, they're gonna encounter this family of people, and they're gonna have to stop. And the people on 59 are, you know how they drive. They're on their cellphones, they're flying along at 50 or 60 miles an hour. All of a sudden, there's gonna be a car in front of them, and they're gonna have to come through a screeching halt, there's gonna be an accident. Another problem with the north-side alignment is five driveway crossings. We have documents from Wisconsin IDOT and other sources that say driveway crossings are a major cause of accidents among children and inexperienced people. Whereas the south side, there are no driveways and no excess crossings here. So safety is by far favorable to the south-side orientation along the forest preserve. Aesthetics, you have a pleasant drive along forest preserve property. On the north side, you have extremely invasive on private property. And in fact, on the corner there, you're literally two or three steps away from her garage and her property. Plus the fact that we're gonna have to be cleaning up after these people. Dogs could be an issue, who knows what's going on. Utilities, on the north side, you must relocate numerous utilities. South side, no utility work required. You can build a path right over the natural gas pipeline. You know, NICOR does it all the time. Their pipelines go underneath sidewalks, roadways, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there's no utility work required on the south side. Ecology. So you didn't get the packets, did you?
No, we can't pack out information. I mean, we can pack it out before the meeting, but not during.
Okay, well, sorry about that. The north side, my property, I was hoping you'd be able to see that. The excuse we keep getting is that it's a Class 4 woodland along the forest preserve property. I provided with a species list of the, not the woodland itself. We don't want the path in the woodland, we want the path on the mowed right-of-way alongside the road. The ecology, according to Table 1, you can pick that up there, is very poor. There's something called a floristic quality index. This is the reference work for the Chicago region, it's called Plants of the Chicago Region. They do something called a floristic quality assessment. I've done that for both sides of the road. The floristic quality assessment for the forest preserve side, the mowed right-of-way, it's mostly weedy species, and the index number is 7.6. It probably doesn't mean much to you, but there's mathematics behind it. Whereas the floristic quality index on my property alone, not to even mention the neighbors, is extremely diverse, and the floristic quality index is at 26. Nature preserves start at 30. So my property is not exactly a nature preserve quality, but if DuPage Woodland, DuPage County calls their forest preserve a Class 4 woodland, then mine is, you know, it's huge compared to what they keep arguing about. So the ecology, again, strongly favors putting the path on the south side. Trees, many mature trees on the north side, trees on the south side, maybe one mature removal. Advantage of a trail connection on the south side, you just take it all the way down, continue on, right down to the regional trail. A clean stretch along forest preserve property, all the way across Williams Road, connected up to the regional trail, and you have something extremely attractive and useful for families. Even finances favor the south side. The money that it would take to acquire easements, and do the grading, and the utility removal, all of those issues, the destruction of our property, you could, instead of doing that, you could use that money to extend the trail farther east. It would actually be advantageous to take that trail farther east towards the regional trail. So every issue strongly favors orienting the trail on the south side rather than disruptive amongst five private homeowners. It's, there's a picture in there, in with the packets that I handed out, that shows, and you don't need a degree in ecology or biology to recognize what's in that picture. It's a field of dandelions, and it's other species like, well, the species there, creeping charlie, poison ivy, Virginia creeper, dandelions, smooth broom, orchard grass, reed canary grass, and there are a few natives in there, like moonseed vine, trout lily, and spring beauties, hopefully, that have survived the mowing. But the ecology, like I said, is extremely poor on the mowed right-of-way. We don't want it in the Class 4 woodland, we want it on the mowed right-of-way. It's, to us, it's a no-brainer. What more can I say? Would you like this?
Do we keep this? Mm-hmm, that's up to you.
Be happy to give it to you.
Okay. If you could just take that and put it over to the side, and someone will take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, then we have Pam Spivak and Patty Village.
Good evening. My name is Pam Spivak, and I am once again speaking on the Mack Road Bike Trail. I am first going to focus on two main reasons Warrenville favored the north side of Mack Road for the path. Number one, the Class 4 Forest Preserve designation. I want to point out, like Mitch did, that 20-plus feet of property adjacent to the road, which is a potential trail location on the south side, is continuously being mowed. This activity most certainly would not be permitted if there was any special vegetation to be protected. Number two, the crossing signal question. At the October 14th, 2020, public meeting, it was stated that due to the high traffic volume of 4,000 cars daily, a crossing signal would not be recommended. That figure was unequivocally too high. If you want to reference IDOT's annual average daily traffic statistics, here are the numbers as of December 2022, including several surrounding streets for comparison. Mack Road, 2,200; Purnell, 2,600; Williams Road, 1150; Gary's Mill, 5,300; Route 59, 37,200. I want to particularly highlight Batavia Road, which has 5,200, more than double Mack Road. The city has installed a highly effective flashing eye-catching signal at the Batavia-Williams Road intersection. There is no reason that the same feature can't be implemented on Mack Road. Or to eliminate a signal altogether, have the south-side pass, path, continue, pass Williams Road to connect with the regional trail as Blackwell runs continuously from Route 59 to Winfield Road. Now addressing, now I'll address the recurring easement issues. I mentioned at the May 2nd, 2022 council meeting, that I requested info through FOIA. At that time, I was shocked to see that easement requirement for my property had changed from eight-feet permanent, 16-feet temporary, with flags still in the ground marking these boundaries, to 20-feet permanent, 25-feet temporary, for a total of 45 feet. I was told this was due to state-of-Illinois requirements. I recently received the latest blueprint. Surprise, surprise! The specs have increased again to 25-permanent and 35-plus-feet temporary, for a total now of 60 feet that you want of my property. My neighbors are similarly affected. As you can imagine, all this grading and driveway work will have a significant detrimental impact on our property values and result in the removal, not relocation as specified on previous layouts, of all the landscaping enhancements, pillars, lighting, split-rail fencing, plannings, et cetera, we have invested time, money, and effort in. We especially value our pillars, which provide essential illumination at the very end of our drives. Put yourself in our place and ask if you would be on board with this situation and the excessive intrusive requirements. My neighbors and I have constantly stressed safety and previously provided detailed documentation regarding the danger of driveway crossings in general, and more so on hilly terrain. We do not want to be liable as owners of the permanent easements for injury lawsuits. This project has been fraught with issues from the very get-go. Per ERA's analysis and recommendation, you approved Alternative 3, which was based on inaccurate information. Surveys proved that Warrenville did not have the sufficient right-of-way, which was a crucial factor of that option. There has been such a negative track history of meandering plans, who knows what curveballs the future yet holds. Above and below ground utilities, along with drainage concerns, are just two examples that come to mind. All these missteps that have transpired so far certainly do not inspire confidence that the job will be done right in a quality manner. We adamantly oppose locating the trail on the north side, as we have from the very first time that we were made aware of this plan. There is no valid justification for a town to take and use private property when there is a safer public land option. There has been every opportunity for Warrenville to work with the Forest Preserve District of DuPage, who's developing a Blackwell master plan. Put the bike path on the south side of Mack Road where it belongs, and it's safest for riders, pedestrians, and motorists alike. Please seriously consider my comments and the facts presented as responsible representatives of government. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more person who has signed up. Francine Manalou?
Yes, thank you. Oh, Patty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patty, if you wanted to speak, please. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Patty Velsich. I live at 29W660 Mack Road. And I looked up what an easement is, and today, and it said affirmative easement is essentially a request to use landowner's property out of necessity, such as a public utility company needing to run lines on or under private property. This bike path is not a necessity. The city of Warrenville is once again infringing on homeowners' rights. Many years ago, our parents, Pam and I, and other neighbors, fought against being annexed into Warrenville. They went to many city hall meetings. And I lost my place. And Warrenville still went ahead after they all said no and annexed us in. And if we weren't annexed right now, we wouldn't even be at this meeting. The south, the city of council is following the same scenario. You aren't listening to us at all. It's like we're doing, we're on a deaf ear. South side makes more sense, it's much safer for pedestrians and homeowners. It is cost-effective to do it on the south side. It is less intrusive and will look beautiful. Putting the bike path on the north side is taking away from our privacy, our peace, our enjoyment, and devaluing our property. We are gonna have a big, black, 10-foot slab running across our property with strangers on it, on the weekends, with dogs. Who's gonna clean up after the dogs? I don't, I have dogs. We're gonna have dogs with my dogs, probably, now I have to leash my dogs. It's, you know, I gotta tell all of you, everyone that comes to my house, friends, family, even the Amazon guy, I always throw it out there just to get their opinion, what side should this bike path, because they can see the flag. They all say, why would they put it here when they've got the beautiful forest preserve? It does not make sense at all. I mean, it's horrible. Where am I? This is not right. We have a forest preserve across the street, and what is the motivation here? Is it the city of Warrenville serving needs and interests of the citizens that agree to put it on the south side, or is it their own self-interest? This will be so invasive, all five of us home- This will be so invasive. All five of us homeowners say no to this bike path. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Francine? If you please state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Francine Manalow, and I live at twenty-nine W five-thirty Mack Road, right smack across from the dog run. And I have to admit, I love that dog run. To see those beautiful animals just run free like that is beautiful. So I believe very strongly that the dog run and other areas on Mack Road are very beneficial to the city and to people living in the area. But this is a whole different story. This is our home. This is my sanctuary for thirty-eight years. But what do you care? It's not your house. You don't have to worry about people infringing on your peace and quiet and solitude. Now, what are you going to do for me? But does it matter? Who am I? Just one person? I'll tell you what you're going to do. Number one, I'm going to hit eighty years old next month, but who's counting? And I know from living in the city of Chicago and my business for forty-three years has been in the city, that you can't fight City Hall. So let's put it on a strictly business basis. You're taking away from me. You're creating liabilities. Number one, what if I had to sell the property? How would it look with workmen in the front? Or, oh, yes, they're going to do something, but I really don't know what it's going to look like. That's just one small item. And then I was planning, and I'm going to have to cancel it. A big reunion of over one hundred people this summer of my relatives. That's all shot. So the whole point is, no. If you're going to create these liabilities, I want compensation. And it's not in the form of money necessarily, although it would be nice. I want my electric line to go underground to the house from the street. I want water to come through from where you have it in line with the forest preserve. And then I want to tell you, please, please, have you had, I'd like to know something, by the way. Did anybody do a survey across the street to see who would use this, what percentage of people? And what kind of liability would be created with a sidewalk if somebody fell and, God forbid, was killed as they fell onto the road? Boy, those cars down Mack Road come down awfully fast. Sometimes I have to admit, when I was considerably younger, I was one of them. So please reconsider the pros and cons, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, have no one else for public comment? Now on to the official and staff comments. The, I would like to say, the mayor is not here. He is out due to a medical circumstance, and we wish him a speedy recovery. I would like to say happy holidays and happy Hanukkah to all our citizens in Warrenville, and a lot of health and happiness in twenty-twenty-three. Just a reminder that City Hall, because of the holidays, will be closed December twenty-third and December twenty-sixth, and again on December thirtieth and January second of twenty-twenty-three. Today was the first day to turn in your packet if you were running for election to get your name on the ballot. Oh, I'm sorry, today is the last day, not the first day. Today is the last day. If you wanted to get your name on the ballot for any of the positions that we had here available in the city of Warrenville, I'd like to thank all who decided to volunteer their time and talent to our wonderful Warrenville community. Clerk? Okay. Treasurer, Alderman? Comments? Alderman Widener?
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations to the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, who were, was notified that the city of Warrenville once again received certification as a bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level. This is no small feat. There's a lot of planning and a lot of volunteer involvement and a lot of city staff who are involved with making that application. I believe it's about ninety questions that have to, that require detailed answers. And it was, again, quite an accomplishment to receive that designation. We're very proud of all the work that they did and all the work that the city staff did in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Civil Engineer David Romero and Community Service Technician April Garcia for their Employee Recognition Excellence Award that was granted this past week. And other nominees were also recognized for their service to Warrenville.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. City Administrator?
Just a quick happy holidays to everyone in the community, and a reminder that the holiday season can be a difficult and challenging time for some. So if you have neighbors or friends that may not have celebrations going on or may need to check in, please check in on those folks and make sure that they're cared for as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Attorney? Okay, no comment. All right. Now on to the approval of the agenda. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I move to approve the agenda for the December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two City Council Regular Meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay, the, next we need the approval of the minutes. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the December fifth, twenty-twenty-two City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Now on to the consent agenda. Item A, offer second reading and pass ordinance O two-zero-two-two dash four-eight for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May one, twenty-twenty-two and ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-three. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R two-zero-two-two dash seven-zero, approving the purchase of a dump body for a Public Works Dump Truck from Monroe Truck Equipment. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R two-zero-two-two dash seven-one, waiving competitive bidding and approving the purchase of a control panel from Metropolitan Pump Company for the Cerny Park Lift Station. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R two-zero-two-two dash seven-two, approving a professional service agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for design and monitoring services related to the proposed well number thirteen project at thirty W one-twenty-one Estes Street and the proposed water tower project on the Thornton site at three S six-six-zero Route fifty-nine. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct Public Works staff to, one, continue pruning twenty percent of the non-Route fifty-six Parkway trees each year. Two, include an additional thirty thousand dollars in general fund dollars for the FY twenty-twenty-four budget to plant new Parkway trees. And three, continue utilizing the consulting-certified arborist who reviews development plans for the city. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and endorse the Veterans Memorial Renovation Plan described in Public Works Director Kukler's December sixth, twenty-twenty-two memorandum. G, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Jana Davidson to the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. H, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Amy Crishell to fill the unexpired term of chairman of the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Commission expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. I, accept staff recommendation and approve the waiver of raffle and twenty-four-hour liquor licenses fees and bonds required for the organizations listed on the calendar year twenty-twenty-three waiver of license fees list. J, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. K, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. L, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. M, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission held on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. N, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on December eighth, twenty-twenty-two. O, receive and file report of invoices paid up to December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. P, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before January third, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, six-hundred dollars and sixty-four cents. Q, receive and file report of Master Debit Card expenditures for the month of November, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Alderman Widener?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Pro Tom Berry.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crokenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we do, on to the regular agenda. We have two items. Somebody like to bring those forward, please? First one, Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O two-zero-two-two dash four-nine, amending ordinance O two-zero-two-two dash ten, adopting the Warrenville Annual Budget Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Oh, Finance Director Dalston, please.
Thank you. This budget amendment is presented tonight for consideration. This is to properly document the funding for the ongoing project, which we have been discussing for quite some time. It includes engineering, as well as the purchase price for the two properties are related to the well, or to the well and tower and iron removal project, both on the Estes property and the Thornton's property as well.
Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I suppose my only comment would be that as, as part of the Long Range Financial Planning Work Group, one of the things that our financial advisor told us was that we were going to have to do it this way, instead of including the money in the budget ahead of time. We would have to have a budget amendment after we passed our reimbursement resolution so that once we do finance the purchase and construction of the well and new water tower, then we can use those loan proceeds to reimburse the city for these costs as part of this larger project. And we have passed that reimbursement resolution, but we had not at the time the budget was adopted.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crokenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. The next item, somebody bring that forward. Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation. I'm designate Alderman Lockett to represent the City Council on future economic development representatives discussions involving the future of the Two Brothers property at the northwest corner of Route fifty-six and Route fifty-nine.
Second? We have a motion and a second? We have any comments? Director Mensah?
Thank you, and good evening, City Council. Unfortunately, the Two Brothers Company has informed the city that they no longer are planning to develop a project on the property they own at the northwest corner of fifty-nine and fifty-six. The property is listed with a pretty high-caliber real estate brokerage firm specializing in commercial properties. We are starting to receive inquiries from developers and other brokers about the potential purchase and future development of the property. As part of that process, we fully expect that it would benefit the community if staff has the opportunity to discuss questions regarding the future of that property with the City Council's Economic Development Representatives, which include Mayor Brummel and Alderman Ashauer. Alderman Ashauer does own a piece of property, commercial property, adjacent to the Two Brothers property. And it's very possible that there'll have to be discussions and decisions that would involve his property and how his property would relate to the Two Brothers property. So what the mayor is suggesting and recommending and staff concurs is that we, on an interim basis, replace Alderman Ashauer as the Economic Development Representative from the City Council in this particular situation and as it relates to discussions involving the Two Brothers property with Alderman John Lockett, former Plan Commission member, also representing Ward One. Staff's in favor of that, and I believe Alderman Lockett's willing to accept another volunteer position for the City Council. Take another bullet.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett, do you have anything, any comments?
No, I'm just excited to see what we can make happen over there.
Good. Any, Alderman, Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I'm sure I speak for the rest of the council. I just want to express appreciation to Alderman Lockett for fulfilling this role and lending his expertise on this matter. Thank you.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, we have a roll call.
Alderman Crokenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Crishell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
And Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have nothing under unfinished business or new business, and we do not have a closed session. We need one final motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, very good.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, and thank you for watching.